September 18, 2013, City Council. And by Greenwich Mean Time, it is 7:00. So, would you please call the order? The rule?
Counselor Prom.
Here.
Counselor Kremeyer.
Here.
Counselor Owen.
Here.
Counselor Barton Mullins.
Here.
Counselor Quimby.
Here.
Counselor Arnold.
Here.
Mayor Weatherby.
Here. Would you all rise while I lead you in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And it's good to see a crowd out there. I don't know what we can do to keep everybody coming back, but I guess we could be something controversial. We'll try and get those ordered up every so often. The next item is a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the consent.
Seconded.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 It is passing unanimously. Now, citizens wishing to speak on non-agenda items? I do have one. Darren Riordan, Riordan. I know I am reading, massacring your last name. If you come up and give your name and address, please. And it will put a three-minute limit on speakers.
Thank you for the time this evening. My name is Darren Riordan, 871 Northeast Market Drive, Fairview. I'm here with regard to the public records request dated July 2, 2013, made by Steve Kaufman and myself. On September 30, just 12 days from today, three months will have transpired since our originally issued public records request. We initially kept our requests limited to narrow date ranges and topics to ensure that the councilors could efficiently and completely respond to the requests. Broadly speaking, the request was for each councillor to produce all emails for the month of June related to city business, including sent and received email. Mr. Kaufman and I personally paid fees totaling $182 to gain access to this information. We assumed our request would be completely fulfilled by all councilors as required by Oregon law. After reviewing the documents produced, it was clear that not all councilors chose to comply with legally enforceable public records requests. In fact, one councillor only produced five emails in total in response to the request. A second records request, as well as a call from several prominent members of the Fairview community, for transparency has produced nothing further. As we all know, the next step to enforce a public records request is to file a civil lawsuit. We also know that it's extraordinarily expensive and average city residents are unable to effectively enforce their rights through the court system. I don't have any desire or the means to file a lawsuit, even though at least one councillor appears to have violated the law. Instead, I'm simply requesting that the city fully refund the money paid for this public records request. It is in the city's best interest to stand behind its citizens when they insist on an open and transparent government. Since at least one councillor has chosen to deny the public its right to an open and transparent government as required by Oregon law, at a minimum, it makes sense for the city to fully refund our fees paid pursuant to this request. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is the seat administrator and director report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilors. I just have a few items for you this evening. I wanted to remind the public of the Police Department's teenage girls' self-defense class that is going to be held on October 5. So, if you're interested in attending or having your daughters attend, please contact our Police Department for additional information. I also wanted to alert our citizens as well to a notice by the Noise Management Group for the Port of Portland that military aircraft operations are going to be conducting evening trainings the September 17 through the 20. So, if you hear additional activity in the evenings, that is what that is about. They intend to have the most flights completed by 10:30 in all evenings. And I just want to go on the record in regard to public records requests. All documents have been submitted to me as of this morning. They are going to be in the hands of the city attorney tomorrow, and those will be completed and fulfilled as requested. And that is all I have for you this evening. However, I do have a brief report from your chief, Johnson.
I just wanted to announce very proudly that after three years of hard work, especially by some of our civilian staff and Sergeant Pemberton and Sergeant Meyer and the work I've done, we are re-accredited officially. It was voted on on September 5 by the Board of the Oregon Association Chiefs of Police, and our re-accreditation for the next three years has been approved. That makes us, I think, one of 32 agencies in the state of Oregon that are formally and officially state accredited out of some 180. And so, it's a voluntary compliance, it's 102 standards, and I'm very proud of that, and I'm very pleased to bring that to you tonight. The other thing I wanted to mention, and I have the numbers, I think, in front of you, going off the top of my head. We do sex offender registration here every Tuesdays from 8:00 a.m. to noon. Our detective is responsible for those and those investigations. I believe through the end of August, we've done some 233 sex offender registrations in our small department. It's a phenomenal amount. It takes somewhere upwards of 30 minutes to register those individuals, depending on if it's an annual or an initial. It's a lot of hard work, and it's difficult to deal with some of the incidences. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Barton Mullins.
Chief, does that mean that all 230 some live in Fairview?
No. In fact, I would say to you, very few of them. We have more than you can imagine. We cannot by law turn them away. I am researching right now if we have the ability to not register sex offenders, but so far, the legal opinion is we have no choice. We can limit the hours, but we can't stop doing it.
So, you actually have to register any sex offender from any area?
Lots and lots of Portland folks come out here. For whatever reason, we're not sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, that's us. That is all that we have this evening for you. However, Deputy Director Folger and Public Works Director Allen Berry is available as well.
Yes, Counselor Arnold.
Yes, Sam, I had a question for you. In a recent article in the Portland Tribune, it said that the Multnomah County Sheriff is looking at the city of Fairview as one of its potential sites for relocation. And just wondering, this is the first, I read about it in the Portland Tribune, so this was the first I heard about it. So, what can you tell us about it?
That's the first we heard. We were notified about, well, several months ago, they had sent out, the county had sent out an RFI request, which is a request for information. We were told, or led to believe, that the, a developer had expressed interest and had responded to that on his own initiative, but we'd not heard anything additional, and that's just a request for information from the county. Then we had heard that the county was not going, no longer going to pursue a new building. So, the article was a bit surprising to us as well. We heard from the developer, actually, that day, and it is, at this point, just going to the next step in the process, which they will now begin an RFP process, is what I understand. So, a request for proposals from interested developers.
So, they are still interested in the site, then?
That's my understanding. I've not heard, you know, directly from the county at all. That's just what we've heard through the developer.
Thank you.
Well, I could add a little bit. I had a conversation with County Commissioner Diane McHale today, and this is definitely being researched. There is a committee made up of, as I understand it, county facilities, people, and the sheriff's office, and she, I asked her to please push Fairview, obviously. And so, she says she will do what she can, and it's right now is in the hands of that committee. Okay?
Great.
Counselor Barton Mullins.
I have a couple of questions of Mr. Berry. Please. The first one is just kind of a, I just kind of have to know this question, this answer. I walk almost daily the Salish Ponds and around the ponds and whatnot. Can you tell me why there is a boot scraper cemented to the outhouse?
There's a what?
A boot scraper cemented to the outhouse.
You know, I-
Just curious. I'm just curious.
Counselor, I know why that's the, I don't know.
All righty.
I can check. I assume it was part of the agenda on the-
Don't spend any time. Don't spend your time on it. I just thought maybe there was a reason.
It's probably to scrape boots.
Okay. That's why you get the big bucks. Okay. Now, my second question to you is, a little more seriously. If I recall, a couple of years ago, when we were working on the Fairview Woods Park, and maybe the chief might need to speak to this too, I'm not sure, but if I recall, at that time, we changed the times that the parks were available from, like, dawn to dusk. And I didn't know, I, I thought that's what we had changed all the parks to, to make it easier for the police to know, you know, about patrolling or not. But my question is, when I walked, the sign going to Salish Ponds says 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight. So, I'm confused.
Yeah, that's one of the things we've talked about at the Parks Committee. We need to get those things all consistent, and we, I think we've generally said that we want that dawn to dusk across the board for the parks.
So, after all these years, the signs are not all changed?
No. I can speak to that. I was here when John Gesner was, Public, Community Development Director was working on that. It was in, there's a couple areas in the city where there is fishing on the water, and they fish early at 5:00. So, they left the timeframes earlier in those particular areas for the fishermen at that time. Again, this was back in 2009-ish.
Yeah, about that.
So, at that time, that's why those areas were left with the earlier time because of the fishing times.
Okay. Of course, they don't need to be out there at midnight. Okay.
Yeah, and that's been a discussion we've had because it is a problem to get people in Salish at night. You know, it's not, it's not good. We don't want that.
Right. So, the Parks Committee is looking into that?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Okay, none. Saying none, it's Mayor Committee reports, and let's Counselor Arnold.
Thank you, Mayor Weatherby. I would like to bring to light some inaccuracies and some misinformation that was written in a recent letter to the editor of the Gresham Outlook dated Thursday, September 12, by Brian Cooper. In this article, Mr. Cooper writes, "After an aggressive campaign from the local business groups to get the city to pay for their sidewalk and street repair, the city council, many of whom are associated with the same business group, has decided to break from the old policy." First, the campaign that Mr. Cooper refers to is not a local business group, but a homeowners' association along Village Street. Second, Mr. Cooper states that the citizens working on this issue are part of the same local business group as members of council. This is, again, a falsity. I contacted the membership director of the Fairview Business Association today, of which I am a member, to confirm our current membership roster, and was told that no one from the Village Street Homeowners Association is currently a member. Mr. Cooper continues, "Places in Fairview have been waiting for sidewalks for years, but will continue to wait while their tax dollars are used to repair sidewalks of those that already have them. Just for informational purposes, those areas in the city that are currently without sidewalks are in older neighborhoods. We created code indicating that constructions, newer construction must factor in their cost, placement of sidewalks, therefore placing the responsibility of sidewalk development on builder. Our older neighborhoods prior to this code were left without sidewalks. We have received some grant funding to place sidewalks in Old Town, but that money is limited and shared with other jurisdictions. I am a strong advocate for sidewalks in our community and frankly would like to see them throughout our whole entire city. Nowhere in Mr. Cooper's editorial did he suggest solutions, but this is not surprising as Mr. Cooper and Ms. Jones and a small group that they have recruited have made it their mission to launch a smear campaign that started well before last year's election. This list of tactics is long and includes bogus campaign finance violations that were brought up two weeks before the 2012 election, unfounded public meeting law violations, allegations of not sharing our emails, and on and on and on. I do not want to give any credit to this group by acknowledging their putty beefs, but I've come to the realization that I can't remain silent any longer and must voice my concerns over this behavior. This is the time, there is a time and there is a place, and it's called election, and that's going to happen in 2014. And by all means, Mr. Cooper, Ms. Jones, or anyone else for that matter that feels they can run the city better, please run for office next year. In the meantime, hand gestures, rolling of eyes, outbursts, and disrespectful behavior during council session is unacceptable and should not be tolerated. The perception that we are doing business outside of the public is just flat-out not true. It's not true. We need to not allow disgruntled candidates who lost their election to sidetrack us from the good work that needs to be done. We must move the city forward, we must unite, and continue to do what is best for our citizens and our city. I am committed to doing this work, and I know that my fellow councilors are too. Let's refine our council goals, let's strategize on how we can accomplish these goals. Enough is enough. Let's move on."
Thank you.
All right. Order.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Quimby.
I can't top that. I just have one request of our legal staff here tonight. To the best of my knowledge, I complied 100% with the request for public records, and to the best of my knowledge, nothing illegal was found. Is that correct? So, I just want to make that clear to the public. There was nothing illegal done, nothing illegal was found. And I think some of the blogs that are in the paper and some of the accusations that continue, it has changed from you did something wrong to, well, there's a perception that you did something wrong, to, well, we didn't get every email that was sent and received. As our legal staff just said, there was nothing illegal done. And it's almost to the point now where I would like to request that our city attorney stand up for this city council who has done nothing wrong. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Barton Mullins.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I had a really busy week last week. Went to several meetings. To begin with, my first meeting of the week was with EMUCTAC, which is East Multnomah County Transportation Committee. They are having a invitation-only bike ride next week. However, I'm not going to be able to participate. It's an eight-mile bike ride, and Mr. Allen Berry is going to be taking my place. They're going to be starting at Athan Kelly, going through the Springwater Trail, through the Fairview Trail to Halsey, and then on to McMinniman's to, well, they don't say party, they just say that they're going to get together and compare the ride. So, I wish him a lot of fun, and thank you for doing that for me. Let's see. The legislature passed an initiative. They're working with, going to be working with 5,000 vehicles, and they're going to try different ideas to see what will work, to get people to change the way they drive. This is supposed to be completed in 2015, and we were told that in a sample, some sort of testing that they did, that people would pay up to $9, to pay a toll for $9 to go over the Columbia River before they would change the way they drove. I find it absolutely amazing. So, that'll be really interesting to see where that goes. The STIP, the State Transportation Improvement Program, has been decreased in its funding $1 million, which is very disappointing, which means that only, excuse me, the 238th has, will go ahead and be completed from Gleason down through Halsey, which is great news. The bad news is that the Sandy Boulevard will not be funded, and that's the county project, not the Gresham project. So, that's a little disappointing. JPAC, JPAC is the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, which I sit on. We passed the Resolution 13-4454 acknowledging the active transportation plan draft, which will just be for further review and refinement. We're hoping to have it completed by July 2014, and right now, they're hoping to get that incorporated into the regional transportation plan. 20 mayors signed a letter opposing that this go forward. However, we were told that all of their concerns have been met, and that they did postpone this until January to make sure that all of their complaints were addressed. So, I feel that we've really moved ahead with that. MTIP, which is, I don't know who's spelling that is, but it's driving me crazy. MTIP, Metropolitan Transportation Improvement Program, has defined their 100% list. This is a list of all sorts of different transportation projects that the area has wanted to put forth. A lot of that was done through a huge study that we did here in East County for several years. And again, on the 100% list, the Northeast, 238th is a go-ahead. You know which one I'm talking about, 238th and Wood Village, the windy street that goes up to Safeway. They're going to be widening that and making that a lot safer, so. EME, East Multnomah County, or East Metro Economic Alliance, another group I sit on, voted in support of the Gresham Barlow Bond Measure coming up. It's a $210 million, 10-year bond measure. It's very significant. Really need to think about this. Will raise the average homeowner's taxes by $22 a month. We had, we did have two people vote against it, but the majority voted to go ahead and support that bill. Councilors have this flyer sitting on their desk. I just wanted to, you're all invited to go to this. It's a Safe Routes, Oregon Safe Routes to School program, and they put together a video. They're wanting everybody to come and preview that. It's Friday, September 27, at 2:00 at Troutdale Elementary School, and anybody and everybody is invited. And that was my week. I think I'm done. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Owen.
No way can I follow Lisa Barton Mullins' report this evening, so I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kremeyer.
The only thing I have is that due to scheduling conflicts, we didn't have enough people to come to the EDAC meeting and have a quorum, so it was canceled. So, we have no report from that this month, so.
Thank you. Counselor Prom.
Yes, this week I met with State Representative Chris Gorsick. We talked about the potential for the photo radar in the school zones program, legislation that's coming through. We'd also talked about a few other things. I invited him to come to city council because he hasn't been to the local councils that he wanted to, he says, so he expects to come sometime this fall. Also, there's a, I talked to Multnomah County Animal Control this week, people, the good people there. There are some concerns in their citizenry that Fairview's mascot, the, the part wolf has been captured and put down, but actually, the dog has been, is in a rescue facility right now, and they're working to acclimate him to humans so he won't bite police officers. And, yeah, so, he's, he's not being put down, he won't be put down, that's their guarantee. He's in a service program, and eventually, they'll get him into a foster home, so. That's all.
Thank you. The only report I have to make is what Lisa referred to with the mayor's group. There's a concern that, first of all, there's been voiced by metro councilors, the fact that metro needs to start and initiate a tax base. And that's a concern because that affects everyone with compression, and would be, again, an additional tax on everyone in the tri-county area. The other active transportation issue is that the fear that there is social engineering that they're attempting to do with their planners, who are mostly, I would guess, Portland-based people. And I, the feeling that I receive out here is that people like a small-town feel and the ability to drive to where they need to go, whether it is New Seasons, or downtown Portland, or Vancouver, or the Mall, or Clackamas Town Center, or whatever. And what metro wants to do is to get everyone out of their car, ride their bike. The only thing they didn't mention is use of a horse. And they also want mass transit. And as you know, mass transit is, we're really kind of forgotten out here by TriMet, and what I've asked for is counsel this next time to review and approve a letter going to TriMet to see about increasing transportation, initiating perhaps a bound-to-be flyer to take pressure off of TriMet, or, excuse me, Max, people can go downtown and locally down here in another avenue, and to have transportation looked at, a study looked at, transportation north of Sandy, which we have zero. And I know there's some businesses out there wonder why, and have talked to me about it and saying that they, their people really wanted, would like to have that opportunity to have a bus instead of just drive, and that opportunity isn't present. So, with that, that is all there. She wrote on that. Oh, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to add something to what the mayor's saying. I have absolutely nothing against bike riding, walking, whatever you want to do, but there is a trend, a very strong trend out there right now amongst the governments that seem to be taking more and more money away from some of the transportation projects and putting them all into biking. And there's a new word out there, I think it's called "street diet." Some, is that, is that what it is, Matt? A street diet, where they're actually making streets smaller, and they're actually taking streets that exist now and taking space away from the streets to make more room for bike, bike lanes and whatnot. And I guess I really don't have anything against bikers or anything. I'd like them to be safe, but I think that this trend is way over the top, and I'm concerned about it, and I'm going to-
it, and I'm going to be keeping my eye on that for you, so, sorry.
No, that's all right. The big thing is, if Metro really believes in economic development, they have to be able to move commerce, whether it's a FedEx truck or whatever. And I think maybe they should take a look and count the number of bikes that are at Costco. Okay, Chief, you're next.
Good evening. This is not set up right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. We thought it would be appropriate tonight to bring to you a very brief presentation on a one-year snapshot of how the photo of the intersection safety program, also known as Photo Red Light Program, has been operating. By way of a brief review, council passed Resolution 37, 2011, on September 7th, 2011, authorizing the program. Ultimately, red light cameras were installed on, in essence, three approaches at Fairview Parkway and Halsey, southbound on Fairview Parkway, and east and westbound on Halsey. Little-known secret for those of you listening now, there is no camera northbound. So, that's good to know. The traffic signals are owned by Multnomah County. The traffic signals are maintained by the city of Gresham. That's important to note because there's been some other areas that have had controversy, but they have always been jurisdictions that own the traffic signals and have the ability to go in and potentially alter them. Why anybody would do that is beyond me. To me, you go to jail for doing stuff like that. We couldn't do that if we wanted to. The city of Fairview does not have the ability to change the timing of the lights, nor does the company we currently contract with, Redflex, have the ability to change the lights. We have obtained certification through the city of Gresham that the 35 mile an hour zones are at four seconds, and the 45 mile an hour zones are at 4.5 seconds. State law requires, I believe, one second for every 10 miles an hour, I believe it is, up to 3.5, something like that, but ours are beyond what the statute requires. The cameras were activated on May 3rd, 2012. Oregon law requires a 30-day warning period, which we did, so we sent warning letters out for the first 30 days of operation for all violations that were sustained by a police officer. We began issuing citations on June 2nd, 2012. We selected officers, and actually, we asked for volunteers, and then we selected specially-trained officers that received training in how to operate the equipment, evaluate, I gave specific parameters in our business rules on what we would accept and what we would reject for violations. Potential violations are preliminarily reviewed at the company. At Redflex, they actually tell us the review in four separate stations, and then if they meet all of the muster there, registered owner, gender match, those kind of things, then they're sent to a police officer in a queue in their system. We log on, and the police officers review the video, the pictures, the registration information to make a determination if a violation meets our criteria. Here's the data, the first full month of citation. So I didn't count June because it wasn't a full month, so I didn't want to skew the data. So the first full month of operation, July 2012, we issued 259 citations for running a red light at all of those approaches that we talked about. On the 12th month, so June 2013, 12 months later, 116 citations were issued. If you compare the first month to the 12th month, we've received a 55.21% reduction in violations and people running red lights at that intersection. Looking at it a different way, I thought I don't want to just look at first month to 12th month because the first month could be skewed, let's look at first six months compared to the second. So from July of '12 to December of '12, we issued 1,324. The second six months of operation, 656. So even looking at that data, we have a 50.45% reduction, 50% reduction in the number of violations at that intersection. A concern has always been accident data. It's a concern that I share. We asked for ODOT, Oregon Department of Transportation, information. They are very, very far behind. The only data we've been able to obtain so far is June 12th to December of '12. There were two accidents reported. On October 2nd, it was a self-report, which, as you all know, if you have an accident, you have to notify Department of Motor Vehicle. No police report was filed, we were not called, so this is simply self-reporting, but according to the self-report, it was 50 feet from the intersection, and it was a rear end, and one of the drivers indicated that they were following too close. The second accident reported was on December 25th. It was actually, I think, 100 feet from the, no, I'm sorry, this one was a driver on a green light that hit a bicyclist that they did not see. On Christmas Day.
There was an accident today?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what that was caused from?
Yes, a person running a red light northbound. The one that doesn't have the camera, and they were issued a citation for running a red light. That won't be in this data, obviously. That'll be in the next batch. We didn't have ODOT information for January 13th to June 13th, but we pulled it off of our computer automated dispatch logs, and we found one accident. It was a drunk driver that struck a pole about 150 feet from the intersection and knocked down a light pole. But no other accidents reported the first six months of this year. As a reminder, we have a three-year contract with Redflex, and the way the language is written, it's three years after the first citation was issued, so we'll have to research and see. I'm sure that was June 2nd, probably. So about June 2nd of 2015, our current contract will expire with the current vendor that we use. At that time, council has the option of terminating the contract without penalty, or there's a provision in the contract that you can leave it one year at a time in extensions, up to five years in a row, or we can just continue to extend it one year at a time without changing any other provisions. But that'll come back to you, obviously, in 2015. The law requires that we complete a legislative, a report to the Legislative Assembly by March 1st of every odd number of year. That report was completed, there's a link, if you want to write, it's a complicated link, obviously, if you just type in "Fairview Photo Radar Report," it'll pop up in Google, that's how I found it. Our goal was to reduce the number of red light violations at this intersection, which in turn, I believe, would reduce the number of injury accidents. We have reduced running a red light violations by over 50% in first year of operation. Although it's too early to definitively draw any conclusions about accidents, it would appear we have reduced the number of injury accidents at that intersection as well. And that's my very brief report on our first year of operation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Counselor Quimby.
If the trend continues with the reduction of citations that are offered at the end of the three-year contract, Redflex can also not renew the contract with the city, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any idea if the numbers drop even more, when it would behoove them to potentially cancel the contract, because it costs them more money to administer it than they're generating or were generating for them?
I don't know. I think once, they've already put out the initial infrastructure costs, so that I'm not sure what it costs them, you know, to maintain it, because we pay the electricity. So it'd be in repair costs, replacement costs, or damage to vandalism. I don't know. I think we have a very good relationship because of some of the work we've done in the legislature that will benefit them likely, and so they're pretty favorable to Fairview if we wanted to continue. And I'll say this, vendors have had some issues throughout this country. I feel comfortable, I can't speak to Redflex International, I can speak to Redflex Oregon, and I believe in Redflex Oregon for two reasons, and why I'm comfortable working with them, and that is Sharon Larson, who was recently hired as the Oregon representative that took Glenn Post's place when he was promoted, is a former executive for the Boy Scouts of America, and I believe very credible and has high integrity. Glenn Post is a former deputy sheriff of Multnomah County, and is highly, I mean, he's been here, I've heard him speak, he went with me to the legislature when we spoke on the other bill that we've talked about, and he talks about how the company gets mad at him, but he hopes to work themselves out of business someday because our point is for safety. I truly believe he believes that. And so I think it's reputable to work with these folks, and I've enjoyed a 50% reduction. I hope to come back to you next year with a much higher number than that, that we reduce those violations.
Counselor Quimby.
Chief, in your presentation, you stated that Gresham checked two different speed zones, and you said one of them was a 45 mile an hour speed zone. I thought Fairview Parkway was a 40 mile an hour zone.
Forty and 35.
Forty and 35, so the 45 mile an hour thing was just incorrect?
Correct. But it's a 4.5-second light, I believe, on the 40. So they're higher than the state standard.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And we have their certifications in our files.
The, I'm a glasses. When we started this program, the statistics that you supplied us from ODOT over a four-and-a-half year period were that there was an average of two accidents per year at all of four of the intersections in Fairview that you eventually wanted to put red light cameras at. Some of them, we knew were, I believe one was a side swipe, and there was some T-bones, but we were unable to establish that out of that average two per year, there were any rear-end accidents. And as you probably recall, I was very concerned about red light camera causing an increase in rear-end accidents. So I was very interested to see the accident statistics versus the reduction in actual citations, and so I guess if we had two accidents, and one we know was a rear-end accident, and one was a right turn, we're basically back in the same boat of two accidents per year, and we don't know how many are rear-ended, other than now, which is one. So it looks great that people are not running the red light because we knew that was a problem, but I.
Well, I would also correct you, counselor, and I don't have the data in front of me. I believe the presentation that I made was the severity of the injuries of the accidents that occurred at Fairview Parkway and Halsey, and it was something like between 60 and 80% of the accidents that occurred there were significant injuries. So if we reduce the severity of the injuries, I think we've accomplished part of our goal.
I would agree that, yeah, you've accomplished part of your goal. I just was hoping that we would be able to put together some sort of statistics that would say that rear-end accidents did not increase, and it doesn't appear to actually be there, but.
Well, I think one year's too preliminary, and I am very, I mean, I want to be completely transparent. If it was up to me, I would throw out the self-reporting because we have no idea of the accuracy of that information. Police didn't respond, police didn't file a report, anybody could file anything, so we don't know the accuracy of following too close, what that was. The other thing we have to be very careful of, especially in self-reporting, and police reports do the same thing, when we file our paperwork with ODOT, when we file police reports, it says, "What's the nearest intersection?" So you could have an intersection a half a mile from Fairview Parkway and Halsey, but you'll list that as your nearest intersection. When ODOT does their, when we ask for accident data from that intersection, that one will pop up. And I have one in there right now that popped up, it's 208th and Halsey, but it shows up as Fairview Parkway and Halsey. And so the data is skewed with the accidents, you got to really drill down, and when you get the self-reporting ones, we're pretty uncomfortable with relying too heavily on what they are. Because if it was injury, obviously, we would have gotten a call.
I think it was real interesting that the self-reported rear-end accident was 50 feet from the intersection, somebody was really following too close. If the front car was not at a stop at the light and got rear-ended 50 feet before he got there, I don't understand that one at all. Somebody was just asleep. Okay, that's all I have.
Well, my wife got rear-ended the other day, she'd been stopped for three seconds plus, so it could have been on a cell phone. We believe that's what it was, so. I just caution you, when we look at rear-end accidents, what the causation is of it, we need to have more information. And I'll be back, we'll report every year on what the data is, and keep you posted on accident data as well as violations.
Anyone else? Great, thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much.
Very much. Okay, next is council business. This is another spellbinder. This is the Sewer Master Plan Adoption, Resolution 47-2013. Alan?
I was going to set it to music, but I knew you. Good evening, mayweather, the members of council. Resolution 47, 2013 is to adopt the updates to the sanitary sewer master plan. As it says in here, basically, our master plan describes the existing sanitary sewage system and the conditioning capacity, and projects what our needs out for 20 years. We've completed it now, we need to adopt it and make it part of our process. If you've got any questions coming on that, I'd be pleased to answer them.
Any questions? Hmm, gee, that's a surprise, nobody. Okay. Well, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 47-2013.
Second. Move in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And I vote no. It passed. Thank you, Alan. That was indeed good. Okay, next is accept the ERI Report Resolution 49-2013. Ah, yes.
Yeah, Resolution 49, 2013 is to approve the compliance order agreement with the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, to implement reporting requirements and standards associated with the MPDS Stormwater Permit. MPDS is the National Fluid Discharge Elimination System. We're a co-permittee with the city of Gresham for our MS4 stormwater permit. Phase one, all the phase one communities in the U.S. are being audited. Ours was done by the EPA last year, and the results were, as are attached to this resolution. Basically, by January 1, we have to have our processes and procedures for review and implementation of erosion control, stormwater treatment on sites approved and accepted. This agreement basically kind of cements the permit requirements that we already have. The things that we need to bear in mind is that as of, once this thing's signed and in place, we are required to report violations that come to our attention, that's the big thing. That's what our permit says we'll do, this just cements the deal. If you've got any questions on that, I'd be pleased to answer them.
Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 49-2013.
Second.
Move in a second, any discussion? All's in favor signify by saying aye.
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 opposed, it has passed unanimously. Thank you, Alan. All right, next, yes, another one, not that anybody's interested, but it's the Street Tree and Sidewalk Maintenance Program, Resolution 48-2013.
Yeah, this resolution is to approve a sidewalk maintenance program handbook, which has policies and operational procedures in there, gives guidelines to what deflections, separations are, outlines the process for remedy in those situations. It also explains the proposed sidewalk repair grant assistance program. And again, you know, this has been an ongoing discussion. As it says here, the handbook basically talks about the policy and operating guidelines regarding defects, how the inspections would be performed, the permitting process, co-compliance measures, the grant assistance program, and then how to select street trees within areas outside of the village. The trees within the village are actually in the planning code, which is a different issue. This applies to selection of trees outside of the village. If you've got any questions on this, I'd be pleased to answer them.
Yes, Counselor Quimby.
I just had one on the last page of the handbook, the approved street treat, excuse me, street tree list in the two-to-three-foot planting area, and there's a list of four. Two final ones are Crab Apples, and I'm not familiar with those brands, I just wanted to verify that those are flowering only and do not bear fruit.
Yeah, all the fruit trees that we have on the list are all ornamental.
Okay.
Okay. Nothing else? Oh, yes, Counselor Arnold.
Yes, Mr. Berry, where in this document will we find specifics about whether the city is proactive or reactive with regards to repairs?
As it currently, as our code sits, we, the, this is complaint-driven, according to our code, that's, the handbook is strictly what to do if there is an issue. That's, the handbook is strictly what to do if there is an issue.
So we're not changing the code?
The code, which is in the ordinance that we read last time, basically cleans up the requirement that if I get a complaint from, about a sidewalk, I used to have to come and ask for you to, for a resolution to tell me to go off and do what we're supposed to do. That, the ordinance cleans up those aspects of the code and left everything else intact.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Alan, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And next, we have some people who would like to speak on this. And what I'd like to reiterate is three minutes, and please give your name and address. The first person is Dean Herford. Dean?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I just want to kind of discuss it from an overall perspective. The developer is responsible to put a sidewalk in, whether I build a home or a commercial complex. I put the, I put the sidewalk in based on government standards. And I put a tree in based on government standards. And I put it all in on government property. So all I really want to bring up tonight is I want you, because I think you guys have got a lot of stuff coming down your pike on the, on the sidewalk issue, but it's baffling to me that laws were passed that puts the burden of the sidewalk repair on the property owner when it's not even on my property. So I just want us to, and I heard yesterday that Oregon City, I think, is coming down with the same similar scenario. So I just want us to be open-minded and think about that. If I, if I, as a property owner, am responsible for that sidewalk, when it's not even on my property, but I built it to your standards, it seems kind of unfair that I would be responsible to pay for it. If that's the case, that I should pay for it, and that's the law right now, then why isn't we stopped there? Why didn't the property owner become responsible for the road as well? So take my scenario, and I'm almost done. Take down there in front of Scrubbies and the complex down there, when I moved in, the sidewalk is already there and the trees are already there. So everything's in place. I didn't have any choice on the trees, but I'm assuming the homeowner in county that put the trees in were the proper trees. And I have just as severe a problem as anybody else. I have three and a half inches of lift on my sidewalks. So I just want to kind of bring the subject up that I think it's going to come to municipalities, why is it the property owner's responsibility to be fixing public property? That's all I want to say.
Thank you very much. Next is Mr. Charles James.
My name is Charles James, I live in 1425 Northeast Village Street in Fairview. I'm one of the Fairview street affected people. I notice there's been some controversy starting up now about, should the city really be doing this, you know, other areas are not sidewalk complete, and so why should the city be looking at it? I would look at this from two different directions. The first direction is that to be fully fair, I would say the city should pay for the sidewalks in front of the Village Street residences. These are 15 feet wide sidewalks. When we bought our places, we did due diligence. Through our due diligence, we later found out that the buildings were built on residential design and that the work study or the work residence basically was not really what had been told to us by the city planning department during the course of our due diligence. Now we come and find out that there was the wrong trees put in, that the sidewalk was compacted to street standards, and that through no fault of the homeowner, the trees now have grown up to a point where during the wind, they start rocking the sidewalk up. During the winter, please go down, stand on top of one of the areas near the library that's been raised up, and you'll actually have a ride when the wind is blowing high. We did not put in those trees, and this was an oversight from the city inspection, one of a number of oversights. However, we're looking at the plan before us. We're dealing with 15-foot wide sidewalks, no other streets in the area outside around City Hall have 15-foot sidewalks. And so for a grant or something that helps us offset this cost, we're doubling our money expenditure for that as it is. Everybody keeps bringing up the issue of fairness. The plan before the city at the present time is fair to the overall area, it's not fair to the folks on Village Street. However, it's a lot better than what we were a year ago, and the sidewalks are still coming up. So I really appreciate your consideration of the vote tonight. We're going to put capital outline through no fault of our own. In 10 years, that whole sidewalk area is about destroyed. And yet, I think it's a good compromise. It's not the best for us, I know, and it's not the best for the city, but it is a good compromise.
Thank you very much. Mr. Anderson, Stephen Anderson.
Hello, ma'am.
Whoops.
That's okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. Good evening, Councilon Mayor. I'm here to also talk about the sidewalks. There's been a lot of time that is put into this. I own two different units on both sides, one on each side of the street. We bought into the village for what the village is. Fairview was a plan. That plan, what we see now, is deteriorating our property values. We have two to three different vacant lots that as a businessperson, I wouldn't want to buy into the city to build on because I don't feel that our city is taking care of what is right. I sent each of you an email today, really expressing my desire to go back to what Fairview was meant to be. It's a community. We need to bond together with our city, with our council, with our residents, to do what is right, to make the city of Fairview, not just Village Street, but the city what it is envisioned. Village Street is the gateway to City Hall. We have many, many events that we hold in our parks. We have many people who walk down our sidewalks. Those sidewalks right now pose a liability. Somebody who trips and falls, that is going to be coming against me. But these are people we want to bring into our city. These are people we want to come to our parks. These are people who we want to come to our functions. This is important. We need to come together as a group, not the residents against the city, not the city against the residents. We have a problem, we can't go back and forth about pointing fingers about who did what or what it is. It is what it is. We have an opportunity tonight to really go forward and make a decision for what's right and make a change. It doesn't matter what one city does, let's be the best that we can be. Let's be what Fairview can be looked at as, that's a great city. They care about their city, they care about their residents, and trying to do what's right. Nothing is ever going to be completely fair. The residents, the homeowners, the associations, which I am a member of, we're not looking for a handout, but we are asking our city to join with us to find a solution that will work. And we hope that that can happen tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephanie.
Yes, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Every clock. Okay, next is Scott. If you, sorry, I don't want to murder it, just please give it, Forrest, thank you. Yes.
Scott Forrest, please take me for Northeast Alton Court. I'd like to speak my opinion regarding the city vote to partially fund the damage caused by the city mandated trees. But first, I'd like to talk to you about broken windows. Broken windows was the brainchild of criminologist and professor James Q. Wilson. Professor Wilson taught government at Harvard for more than two decades. His broken window strategy became a cornerstone for the quality-of-life crime reduction program implemented in cities such as New York City and Los Angeles. Professor Wilson's theory is based on years of research where he found that there is a marked increase in crime in areas with broken windows. If a broken window is left unrepaired, people walking by will conclude that no one cares and no one is in charge, resulting in additional unrepaired broken windows. Criminals believe they reduce their chances of being caught or identified if they operate on streets where potential victims are already accepting of unfavorable living conditions. Both cities applied the quality-of-life program and made small incremental cosmetic fixes around the city. These repairs attributed to playing a major role in reversing the crime epidemic in both cities during the 1990s. While I realize the city of Fairview is not New York or Los Angeles, the broken window theory still applies. Damaged walkways are becoming Fairview's broken windows and ignoring the problem is contagious. I live on Lake Shore Estates and walk the three-mile loop around Fairview Lake three or five times a week. City mandated parkway trees have caused numerous unsafe areas created by sidewalks that have lifted or cracked. I have noticed the same problem in the business area adjacent to City Hall. Whether the city council votes to support supplemental funding for sidewalk repair or not, the problem must be addressed. I did a little research myself, and it didn't take long to find out that Fairview is not the only city facing this issue. In fact, cities all over the nation have faced this very issue. A professor of urban planning for UCLA conducted a survey of 82 cities throughout 45 states. The results found that 40% of the cities rely on the property owners to maintain sidewalks. 46% of those cities share the repair costs with the property owner, and 13%, the city pays for all of it. This means that almost 60% of the cities polled, the city provided some financial support to sidewalk maintenance. Fairview city policy mandates trees, but does nothing to alleviate the consequences of the mandate. This is just plain unfair to leave a liability up to the homeowner for a city mandate. The city really needs to step up and help residents and business owners address our broken windows. Please, repair is needed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents and visitors. Assistance with repair will ease the financial burden and push folks into action. It will give property owners incentive and encourage them to address the problem. I'm asking you to vote in favor of the proposal of the subcommittee to assist with a portion of the expense to repair our sidewalks.
Thank you very much. Next is Mr. Johnny Russell.
Johnny Rashval.
Yeah. Looked. All right, thank you. Next is Barbara Jorgensen.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I guess I first want to say it's been a long time since I've been here. Part of that reason is because I've just become pretty disillusioned with what's been going on and commitments that were made.
Could you please state your name and address?
Sure, I'm sorry, it's Barbara Jorgensen, 1455 Northeast Village Street, owner of the Angels Attic, right across the street over here, and one of the owners of the property where sidewalks are coming up. We were one of the first ones that were living on the streets in the village here, opened one of the first businesses that was here. Ever since that, it's been nothing but one problem after another, to the point where finally, when businesses were closing down and everybody was losing business and we lost close to $30,000, we filed a lawsuit against the city and we mediated that out. And, Mr. Mayor, you made the commitment to me, to my face, that all of the issues that were listed from the city business owners at that time would be resolved through mediation. And we put together a mediation committee. Joe Gull led that committee, and as soon as we started meeting, I believe we had two meetings, Joe left the city and that was the end of the mediation committee and nothing was resolved. So since then, we've had, put the parking lot issues, we've still continued to have parking issues, we now have sidewalk and street kinds of issues, sidewalk issues, it seems like it's just been one issue after another. And at some point, you just stopped believing that the city really wants you here, or that you're even a part of, a member of this city. And so that's why I stopped coming to meetings, because I just didn't feel like we were getting any responses from anybody anymore. And it is, it's a pretty sad state when you can't rely on promises that were made and commitments that were made to your face. So I guess I would like to say again, I'm really disappointed in the way that this has been handled. Yet again, we're at a stalemate of what's going on. You know, when I asked about the sidewalks, I was told that I have this portion about this wide that actually is on my property, and the rest of it is city property. And I'm wondering why we would have to pay for any of that at all. And it is a hazard, people are going to get hurt, and if you want to run the risk of doing that, you know, I guess you can do that. But if I get sued, I'm going to be suing back again because we can't be doing this, we can't be doing this kind of stuff to each other. There is no resolution that's going to be good for anybody here unless the city starts to step up and do what you're supposed to do. So I really would hope that, there's got to be some kind of resolution out of this. And if nothing at all, maybe we need to get that mediation committee back again and start getting back into these problems again.
Yes, Barbara, I'd like to say that I stand by what I said. You see, I don't think you or anyone told myself, our current city administrator, that the committee wasn't functioning. And if known, we certainly would do something. Sam, did you know anything about it?
This is the first I've ever heard of a mediated lawsuit or of a mediation group. So I was not informed of that when I took the position over.
I guess you can call Joe, and actually Brenda, I think was on the committee too.
Oh, I certainly don't doubt you, I just was not informed of it. Otherwise, I would have followed up with you, and I apologize, I had no idea. I have no record of anything of that nature in my files.
Right, please, when you say something, understand that you can only do something if you know something about it, that something has happened. I had no idea. So I will, Sam and I will follow up.
How could you be having meetings here with Joe as your city manager, and you didn't know that he was having mediation meetings?
I didn't know, he stopped.
Well, he's not here.
True, but that doesn't mean that they don't continue otherwise, that they were, I had no idea. And I, he didn't keep me appraised of every single meeting he went to. It was his responsibility, his administrator, to deal with it and then report what was necessary to myself and the other council members.
And as he left, there was no transition plan for the next person that came on? You don't do that?
I wasn't involved with that.
You're the mayor.
But I have no authority to hire or fire anyone in this city.
But you're the mayor, you should know what's going on.
This is a council action. Well, it would be nice, but if you're not told, you don't know.
Well, when you don't get responses from the city, and when you have to continually battle the city, you stop battling after a while.
Okay.
So maybe we need to start again.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, but please work with Sam, okay? We can only do something when we know about a problem, okay?
These problems have never gone away. You know that.
Well, please talk with us afterwards. The next is Keith Curdenham.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Keith Curdenham, I live at 1603 Northeast 200 in Center Place. Allow me to go off on a rabbit trail real quick in regards to the rear end accident that was referred to in the red light proposal. I was actually a witness on that, and I can assure you that it had absolutely nothing to do with anybody stopping short. What it had everything to do with was the car behind was actually playing with his radio. Out of his peripheral vision, the turn lane went, he assumed he had to go, hit the gas, not realizing the truck in front of him had never moved. Everybody had been stationary for at least 30 seconds. We all three pulled over, exchanged information in that. Yeah, I just wanted to clear that up because it's an opportunity to clarify something that wasn't cleared earlier. In regards to sidewalks, I don't know, this is a sticky situation. I've been in residential architecture for 25 years, I've been plating houses, I've been citing plans in through City of Portland, through City of Tiger, and various other jurisdictions. It is my responsibility to make sure that there are adequate street trees and mitigation trees on platen plans. It's always been a sticky situation, who's responsible for what? It's always been a sticky situation, who's responsible for what. In regards to what Mr. Hurford said earlier, I can tell you that up to, you know, approximately 90% of residential homes, the sidewalk is on the private property. It's within a public sidewalk easement. It's an easement that you give up to the city, but it's still your property. And I think most plat plans, most recorded plat plans will effectively show this. With Market and Village Street, these are unique situations. In unique situations, call for unique solutions. I believe we do need to step up and assist this for various reasons. Yes, it is on public property. Yes, this is the gateway to our city. Yes, it is wider than normal and outside the norm. And anytime you're outside the norm, you're talking about an additional cost. 15 years ago, I did have to replace a sidewalk due to street trees. I can tell you, I replaced a seven-foot section that cost me under $200. Took me a weekend to do it. It's not hard to do. I think the worst part is getting rid of the concrete, renting a concrete mixer. Other than that, it's a lot of labor, but it's really not a challenging task at all. Village Street and Market Street are definitely a different case and I do support assistance. What I'm a little reluctant to do is to see an open-ended reoccurring fund every year. We still need to be financially responsible. We still need to be responsible in cities' finances. In return, what I would propose is a one-time grant of, or a one-time expenditure of, say, $75,000 or $100,000 to assist Market Street or Village Street. And that way, we can address those issues. And the rest of it, honestly, it's the burden, it's the assumption of responsibility when you buy a property. There are a lot of things that happen, go into a house that you do not choose to do based on code. You're still responsible for repairing it. You don't get to pick and choose what you get to be responsible for on your property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that's probably to be heard. Are there any further comments, questions, or concerns before I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 48-2013.
Second. So moved in second for the discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Kremeyer.
I would, I just have a couple of comments to make. You know, I was on the committee that helped, you know, put this, put this, you know, before us tonight. And I think the city does need to be a good partner, a good community partner with the residents of the city of Fairview. You know, we do need to be fiscally responsible, but the monies that we have within the city coffers were paid by you, the homeowners, through your property taxes. So if we can't help alleviate some problems and help you out, we're not doing our job. And, you know, sure, this resolution isn't perfect in some people's eyes because it's not giving 100% reimbursement, but at least it's a start. And I think it's a good start for the city of Fairview to work together with the homeowners to start some dialogue and for the residents of the city to see that, you know, we as a council do care and we do, you know, care about your concerns that you have. So, you know, I just want to say that, you know, I really appreciate everybody coming tonight and speaking and showing that, you know, you do care about your city and it does matter to you and the livability matters to you. So you're all to be committed and I thank you.
Good thinking. By the way, the motion did pass and next, Councilor Barton Mullins.
Yeah, I wanted to also thank everybody that showed up tonight. This has been an extremely difficult decision for all of us, well, for some of us anyway. And I wanted to thank everyone who replied to my letter to the editor. I got quite a few emails from people. Quite honestly, they were probably 50/50. The people that were for the city helping certainly wrote much longer emails and had more reasons why they... And I think all of them also had problems with their sidewalks. The people that were against it, I don't think they had problems with their sidewalks or they didn't indicate. And anyway, I just want to say thank you very much for being part of this process. I know everybody's very busy and we've got so much going on, but I do appreciate everybody taking a little bit of time and coming out and letting us know how you think. If we don't know how you think, we can't do what's right for you. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilor Quimby.
I just want to add that it was a very difficult task to come up with something that was going to make sense for everybody. What we did do is change the way things are going to be done in the future from the way it happened in the past. There was a city requirement to compact the dirt under the sidewalks and in the planter strips to the same hardness as where the pavement was going to be. And we determined that was wrong. And we've determined that in the future, a tube needs to be installed that will stop the roots from spreading out of the sidewalks. They are going to be forced to go down. And we've reviewed and come up with different trees that are going to have better root structure headed down vertically versus horizontal. I initially was all in favor of the city paying every dime to fix its own screw-ups from past staff mistakes and from past people who were hired by the city to come up with these trees. It didn't work out, but when I think about the fact that the city, as Councilor Kremeyer pointed out, doesn't have its own money, the city's coffers are filled with the tax dollars of every citizen in this city. And for somebody who doesn't have a sidewalk to say, wait a minute, why are my taxes paying to fix the city screw-up from 10, 15 years ago? I have to listen to those people too. It's been a difficult decision to come up with this compromise. It doesn't make me as happy as I'd like to be. I'd like to say, hey, no problem, the city's got lots of money, it must, let's fix everybody's sidewalk for free. But the truth is, it's every citizen's money that's going to pay those sidewalks. So I think we came up with a pretty good compromise to do what we've done and we've tried to alleviate the problems in the past so that we don't face this issue again. It may take some time for the neighborhoods that are still newer and don't have sidewalk issues yet. We know we're going to deal with that and we, as a council, have decided that we will budget a $50,000 amount on a first-come, first-served basis for people who are given notice that they're out of compliance with their sidewalk. And hopefully, we'll be able to get it resolved over the next 10 to 15 years so that we don't continue to have this. Because that is the thing that has bothered me the most is how are we going to fix this so it doesn't continue to happen over and over again? So I really think we did the best we could and I know we had to compromise, but we did what we could.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor. I'm sorry. Can you just, for the record, clarify that vote? Was it all aye?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I thank everyone for coming in. I really appreciate it. This is part of democracy in action. And Barbara, I hope that you stay involved because I wish I was all-knowing and all-powerful, but I'm not, but I can do what I can do. Okay? Thank you.
Move to adjourn?
Oh, nope, we have another one. Next, we have under public hearing, Sidewalk Program Amendment Ordinance 7-2013, second reading, public hearing. And we'll now hear a reading of the ordinance.
I apologize, I'm on the right page. I will get there. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fairview, Fairview, Oregon, amending Fairview Municipal Code, Chapter 12.05, Sidewalk Maintenance and Repair, and 12.25 Trees and Shrubs Impacting Streets, Traffic Signs, and Sidewalks, to streamline procedures and remove out-of-date references.
Thank you. Staff, is there anything additional? Any additional information on this? Okay, all right. Next, I'm opening up for public hearing. On this particular ordinance, I'd like to ask all those who are in favor, if you choose to come up, and you have three minutes, and please give your name and address on this particular item. Seeing none, all those who oppose this ordinance, please come up. Anyone who has anything to say about it? All right, we'll close the public hearing.
Hope there's someone coming up.
Oh, someone coming up? Okay. Oh, sorry, Michelle, come on up.
Okay, I just had to say this. Okay. Michelle Class, 1430 Northeast Village Street, Village Rowhouse Association Number One. And I just wanted to state that as far as I know and I'd be willing to swear under oath, I am not in any organizations with any of you. And it's only after a lot of negotiation that we have finally come to, I think, an agreement about the trees that were not our fault and that they're, it's not wear and tear, it's because the trees were older and, I mean, it's not because the trees were old, it's not wear and tear, it's because the wrong trees, we put the wrong space incorrectly. And I was just wondering, the trees in front of the City Hall, if they were put in before or around the same time as our trees, just look at the difference. Those little tiny trees are not lifting up a sidewalk at all. And look at our trees. I mean, obviously, it's not a wear and tear issue, it's defect, it's a defective issue. And I want to thank the council for their patience in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Quimby.
Michelle, I just want to address the timing issue. The Village Street buildings were in several years before City Hall. As far as I remember, this building was built in 2000 and I think Village Street was completed in the mid to late 90s. So they got a few years head start.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Right, council, discussion? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Motion to adopt Ordinance 7-2013.
Second.
In the second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it has passed unanimously.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Moving to second, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.